I am Natalie C D Richardson and again it's my pleasure to spend this Friday morning with you. It is Friday. I know many of us look forward to Friday. It means the weekend is here and you know how we do it in the Caribbean when it's weekend, right? So this morning we continue to look at the issue arising out of the Blackrock Community Centre or multi-purpose facility. I know we have many names for it. And sitting with me this morning is Assemblyman Terrence Bain, also known as Pastor Bain. And he of course is the Secretary of the Community Development, Youth Development and Sport in the Tobago House of Assembly. Good morning sir.
Good morning ma'am.
And welcome to our set this morning.
Thank you so much and good morning of course to all our viewers.
I want us to start this conversation this morning shedding some light of course to the Tobago Village Council's policy. So we know that nationally there's a Village Council Association of Pirata in Tobago and one would of course think there's a Tobago arm of it. Can you help us understand the purpose of that structure and how it connects the THA to the village councils on the island?
Okay, well my formal introduction to the village councils and its operation of course is when I came into this position in from December of 2021. What I was informed of is that we have in Tobago an average of about thirty-eight village councils.
Okay.
However, only six of those councils were functional at the time. In order for you to be considered a branch, you have to have at least ten councils operational, meaning that they would have done their AGMs and so on and they are certified.
So you'd have needed to have ten village councils operational.
Right, right, right. So what we endeavored to do was to embark on a village council revitalization program and so on. And at the end of that exercise, we were able to get about twenty-eight of the councils back up and running, do the AGMs and so on. So that also meant that Tobago had a legitimate, that you could call the Tobago branch.
Right.
And from that branch, we would have representation on the national council.
Okay.
So of course, when the AGMs, they are due yearly.
Right.
And the branch has stipulated time for those AGMs to get done. In this case, it's supposed to be, they gave until the thirty-first of March as the cutoff point. Now, we have seen evidence where the branch or the may have decided to give perhaps a little extension to some councils, I suspect based on the circumstances, right? But generally, that is how it functions. But you can appreciate as well that across the island, we have had several lamentations about village councils and...
And that's where my mind is going because you have this very organized structure on the overarching the island and then Pirata and Tobago. And then I'm thinking how the village councils operate and sometimes you have somebody in charge for many years and that person may pass away and nobody knows about bank, you know, these kinds of operational issues. So my question really is, the people who are members of the village councils, are they aware that this exists?
Well, that is the thing, I can't definitively say how or where because you see, in some communities, the interests of village council activity may not be the same.
Right.
You understand? And there are several reasons for that and that people have expressed in some of the meetings that we have had. I think what is happening at present is because of the activities that we are engaging, not only in the revitalization process and the Chief Secretary being one of the main voices about people taking ownership of not only the village council but managing the facilities that fall in the communities and so on for that express purpose, for community work and so on. But in order for us to do that, so that we don't go back to some of the same things that used to occur where there are some people who disenfranchise, sometimes one family hold the key and one group of people control it and that kind of thing. So the idea was to have some working document that will cover the operation and the relationship between the division and the village councils and the operation of those village councils to benefit all.
Right.
When I got there, the team at Community Development had done extensive work to come up with a policy, but they never were able to bring it to the Executive Council to get executive input and certification. So I brought it to the attention of the Executive Council and asked whether or not the Executive Council would allow for the team to come and make a presentation, which they did, and receive the blessings to go out now into the communities and have these consultations, right? To get the feedback of persons as to what you would like to see in a policy that governs the operation of village councils and the relationship that should exist between them and the division across the island. Now, we did not want to go empty-handed, so we wanted to at least have something that we bring to you, not necessarily trying to foist that on the community, but to get your feedback and so on. And so we will, you know, we'll do whatever tweaking we need to do and so on. And hopefully at the end, the document will represent the views of everybody.
Right.
And we've done that. We've done the consultations. In fact, that has been completed. And the report, if not, the report should be ready as we speak. So I will now take this report to the Executive Council. We will massage it extensively and then we will move to the next stage where this become THA policy.
Right.
You understand? Now, it's difficult to say what will be the temperature in each community because not everybody, like I said, would be interested in village council matters. But we will do some PR as well to let people understand that village councils are not for a chosen few. It's for, you know, village councils are supposed to have an extensive representation of all the different...
And in terms of it being a structured organization as well.
Yes, yes. So these matters are in train and so on. And for those who attended the consultation, this is another thing too because it was people who had an interest that came and so on and they were able to share their own views and interrogate the things that we had presenting to them and so on. And share some other things about how we can optimize this which we are doing. And I am satisfied that those conversations had and will have a significant impact on what the final document is going to be like.
And of course, you know, we are going to take the conversation to the present situation at hand, which is the Blackrock Community Centre.
Yes, yes.
But it's not a community centre.
No, no. In fact, in fact, the Blackrock situation is unique from its inception.
Right.
The Blackrock Regional Complex, it was called initially, right? Under the tenure of the late Mr Patrick Manning, he was the Prime Minister at the time. The Cabinet, Asper Cabinet Minute Number 202, I have it here, thank God, decided that they were going to build four regional complexes in the country.
Right.
Three in Trinidad and one in Tobago and Blackrock was the site. It seems as if there was a community centre on the site already and all of that. But this new complex was built in the early nineties. Nipdeck, not Nipdeck, Udicott, I believe, was, yes, Nipdeck, I'm sorry, yes, according to this. Nipdeck is the one who built it in the nineteen nineties under the auspices of the Ministry of Community Development and Culture and Women Affairs at the time with an inter-American bank loan, I believe, right? And they built the facility. The facility was managed by a board, right? And the board's tenure was a two-year tenure, right? From the information we have at the division, and I want to say the information that I'm putting is what is in the division, right? That these boards receive a quarterly subvention from the government. I was listening to Mr Paul here, I think on Wednesday, he did an interview and yesterday he was in another media house. He was saying that there was a line item to treat with that. I don't dispute that I have not found the information yet, so I'm not disputing that. But suffice it to see that the information that I have so far is that there was subvention. The thing about it is that there are no numbers. I can't find, we can't find. So for seven years, from nineteen ninety-six up to twenty-ten, when the last board, based on the information, was, at that time expired, they were receiving a subvention. It is instructive that there is no information so far that could be found for us to have a sense of what that subvention was supposed to be cumulatively and so on. Because that will also give you the villager and the people interested a sense of what you should have expected from this community and its facilities and all of that. And that is reasonable. So what happened in twenty, in twenty, so this arrangement for this subvention came to an end in twenty-twelve of October.
And that's per the Cabinet, no? Oh, okay.
Well, I'm not sure.
Okay, so you're saying it comes to an end. So what informs that?
So what we see is there is some documentation in the division that just says to us that it came to an end. Why? Because almost at the same time simultaneously, there was an Executive Council Minute 191 that now gave, became the point of reference or the authority for the complex to receive quarterly subventions from the Division of Community Development and Sport.
So the initial arrangement was a central governmental arrangement?
Right. But what I've not been able to wrap my mind around yet is whether or not, if in truth and in fact there was a line item, the line item would have come through Community Development.
Right.
You understand?
Yes.
And so that information has to be somewhere.
Okay.
You understand? And I will come to the point where, what do we do? Because the information is critical for us to be able to wrap our minds about what is happening. But suffice it to see that we now have an Executive Council Minute that authorizes a subvention to the Blackrock Regional Complex of eighty thousand dollars per quarter, right? So this began in, now remember I said that the subvention ended in October of twenty-twelve. The Executive Council Minute is dated the thirteenth of February twenty thirteen. But they made it retroactive, retroactive. So that period when it stopped, they made sure that there was, now that was the decision of the then Executive Council. I don't know what was their thinking or whatever, but that was their decision. So what has happened since then is that there is the provision of this subvention every quarter for the Blackrock Regional Complex.
Okay.
Now remember, the last board, information that we have, the last board would have, board's tenure would have ended in about twenty-ten, thereabout. So apparently there was some holdover arrangement that the then Executive Council allowed. However, there is no information to certify that it was Executive Council Minute and we have not found anything like that, right? So what has happened is, when I got to the division, the then administrator said to me, "Secretary, I am having a difficulty paying these bills" because Mr Larry Paul, who was the President of the Village Council, was the principal doing the transaction on behalf of. So it must mean that he had authority somewhere, whether written or not, to contract, to do this business on behalf of.
On behalf of the council, right.
So he was the man that he was bringing these bills and receipts to the division.
Right.
And the administrator said to me, "I am having a difficulty paying these bills because we don't have supporting documents to do so."
Right, because you need to know how the subvention is being spent.
Of course, of course, because remember, the subvention is supposed to treat with wages for workers and some of these things and so on. So if you were getting the subvention, then you shouldn't be bringing a bill to the division to pay the workers if you were getting the subvention because remember, the subvention is deposited into the account of the Blackrock Regional Complex.
For the management of the facility.
Yes, yes, yes. And the Executive Minute is clear as to the purpose of the subvention.
And we have to pause here because it's time to go for a break. But on the other side of the break, I want you to explain where did that, because apparently there's a breakdown in communication because we have Mr Paul saying he's the President and we have on your end saying, but that structure doesn't exist. So when we come from the break, I want you to just clarify that for us, all right? So if you want, stay with us. We head for a break at this time. And just before we went to the break, the question I asked Mr Bean is on two sides, for the Village Council and for COMDEV. Where did that apparent breakdown happen in terms of Mr Paul is insisting that, yes, he is the constituted President of the Village Council and from the COMDEV side, we are hearing that that executive does not exist.
Okay, so because when the conversation started, I was aware that the Blackrock Village Council did not have the AGM within the timeframe that it was supposed to take place according to the rules that they set, which was supposed to be the thirty-first of March. So it is again, not only that, but that was one of the reasons I was saying that as it stands now.
But he would have said that they asked for an extension.
Yes. So what I'm saying is that you can ask for an extension, that's because we said that you can ask for an extension. But it is beyond that, you know. It is beyond that because what Mr Paul did not see is that coming out of what we were just discussing, read the challenge that the then Administrator had.
Right.
What we did was to call Mr Paul to a meeting and said to him, "We are having these challenges. Can you present a comprehensive report of the management of the facility under your tenure?" Because, you know, I did not go into it at the time, there was no need to see whether Mr Paul was duly authorized so to do. Because the relationship at that time, there was no need for that. There was no fight or anything like that. So what Mr Paul brought first of all was a proposal. I have it somewhere. He brought a proposal, as I was saying to him, but that's not what we wanted, right? We need a document that represents the operation of the facility. And he did, in fact, maybe about two weeks or so later, he brought this document, which is a financial report twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-one. So, but it was not audited. However, he signs the document, which is to say that I am really taking ownership of this, which I'm presenting as the information being genuine. So coming out of that, because of the information that we had at the division, as it relates to the numbers, the administration, I was saying that it's still there because the numbers just didn't mention, and there was a lot of time passing, I was trying to figure this out. When I took this to the Chief Secretary, the Chief Secretary said, "Listen, let us cease these payments and let's have the whole thing audited and then we'll make a determination."
Right.
So, but also, also, we were having the conversation about this whole changing of the operations as it relates to all the facilities, including Blackrock, right? With this decision now, Mr Paul was written to, as the person that was doing the transaction, he was written to, let me just get the exact date. Because, and the reason why it is important to say this as well is because he was asked yesterday whether or not he was informed of the division's decision to go in this direction, to cease the payment and so on, and he said no. And I think, you know, the letter says different.
So you are saying that he was duly informed?
Yes, yes. And so the letter is dated June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, right? And it is written, "Mr Paul, President of the Blackrock Village Council." Dear Mr Paul, reading management of a Blackrock multi-purpose facility. Caption matter refers to records of the division. So the letter really just kind of talks about what was happening and so on and the decision. Maybe it is prudent to read it so that everybody could understand, right? So the records of the Division of Community Development, Youth Development and Sport reveal that the Blackrock Regional Multi-Purpose Complex was commissioned in nineteen ninety-six and a board of management was installed to oversee its management. Since the expiration of the tenure of that board, an interim management committee has managed the day-to-day operations of the complex. The executive is once again in the process of reviewing the management structure for all community centres under the purview of the Tobago House of Assembly, including the Blackrock Regional Multi-Purpose Complex. In this regard, please be informed that the present arrangements at the Blackrock Regional Multi-Purpose Complex will be terminated with effect of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Right? Division is in receipts of invoices, of payments, recurring expenditures and all of that. What is it saying? Whatever is owed up to that time? Because there will be legitimate expectation on behalf of those that were working because remember, they were financed by the subventions and by the quarterly...
Quarterly payment.
Yes. So we paid off all of that and we wrote, Mr Paul, we wrote the workers to tell them this is the direction that it is. So the point is to say that you were not informed is incorrect, right? So this is why I'm saying that based on these correspondence, he was not authorized.
Okay.
That is the point, you understand?
After on behalf.
Yes, yes. Now additionally, I took the liberty to go further and ask the division to check, to see if there is any executive council authority that authorizes the village council president to transact business on behalf of the multi-purpose. Because I think that was a critical question to know. And the answer, according to what was sent in, there is no evidence on file that explicitly grants the Blackrock Village Council President permission to transact business on behalf of the Blackrock Multi-Purpose Complex. It is instructive to note however, that the confirmed, which is what I refer to, the executive minute, what they're saying is that there is an executive minute that authorizes payments to the council. So they didn't say who is the person. And I don't have a problem with Mr Paul, who I am sure that he would have gotten the authority from somewhere, whether it's by Woodhamouth or something that we don't have yet.
Right.
So, and that was not the disputation. The disputation was that you have presented a financial report and the numbers, they are conflicting.
Right.
They are conflicting. This is why the Chief Secretary instructed, "Let us do an audit." And I think that that is something, and that is where we have to go now, unfortunately. Now, I must say to you as well, that all these things, we were trying to deal with internally.
Right.
And this is happening since last year.
Right. This is not, this is not what we think in the public just happened overnight.
Right, right, right. So the idea of some, that this is now something just to start this political thing and to galvanize all this talk.
And as you mentioned, political, I want us, because when I had Mr Paul as a guest, you know, I was asking, I was making the point in terms of the fifth schedule of the Tobago House of Assembly Act. And as you are here, I want you sitting as a secretary, a member of the current Tobago House of Assembly, to explain in terms of the relationship between the THA and the central government, especially as it pertains to the governing of these facilities on the island.
Sure, 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 sure. Well, there are some matters that are fifth schedule matters. That simply means that these matters fall under the purview of the various divisions and secretaries in the Tobago space. This is a creature that is in the constitution, the THA Act, right? So it's not willy-nilly and most people know that.
Right. And it has been used by previous chief secretaries, previous secretaries to protect Tobago.
Of course, of course, because, I mean, and I must say that what we are seeing now, in all honesty, is not only ministers from this administration where we have this problem. This has happened before with ministers from other administrations.
Right.
And the Tobago House of Assembly and its officials have always been standing up vehemently against this because it is unlawful, you understand? And so what is supposed to happen? And I'm using me. I am the Secretary for Community Development, Youth Development and Sport. We have all these facilities under my purview.
Right.
If the minister, who is the minister, in this case Minister Kojow Lewis, who is the Minister of Community Development and Sport, wants to have a program in Tobago and wants to, in fact, everything should be collaboration.
Right.
Because the jurisdiction said that is what we are empowered by the THA Act so to do. It is supposed to be a collaboration. And worse yet, to want to use the facilities that fall under the purview of the secretary without the courtesy of him informing the secretary, you understand what I'm saying? Right. So I mean, those things are, and you see, it represents a type of behavior.
So is this the first time this is happening as the minister, who is also the MP for Tobago West, has used facilities or brought in programs in terms of collaborating with COMDEV or if this is just, you know?
This is not, this is not the first time, you know, you know. I think, to be blatantly honest, when we started this journey, the minister, Mr Clark, who is my assistant, the sports and youth fall under his purview. And Mr Clark started out with a very, very amicable relationship with the minister. I did not get involved or interfere. There was no need to.
Right.
We were cordial and when it comes to matters where I as the secretary had to sign off and wherever there was a need for a conversation, those conversations were had. The deterioration came, right? When we built the multi-purpose, I'm sorry, the Blackrock Beach, when we were building the Blackrock Beach. I mean, the minister started making some public statements and stuff and stuff. And it really bothered me. It really bothered me because I knew that this shouldn't be. There is no time that Mayor Ihaset Secretary or Mr Clark making in the public space definitive statements about the minister and how she runs a ministry, you understand?
So you are saying the timeline of what, and this is your perspective?
Right. This is me. This is me purely. This is about August. Yes, it began to deteriorate from there.
Depending on the beach facility that was used for the Commonwealth teams.
Right, right. And so on. And it never improved. And I brought up, I brought a clip here and this informs also my position. I don't know if the producer will be so kind to just give us just a little bit of that and we will talk a little bit about that. And I'm saying that is what informs my perspective as it relates to this relationship. So if you could get the video clip, that will help.
As the leadership has changed in Tobago, I must say that the people are suffering at the mercy of a hapless, hopeless bunch of miscreants. They led us to Watson Duke, Mr Deputy Speaker, and it has been chaos from the...
Deputy Speaker, I want to rise on forty-eight. Mister...
She said before, what she said before is that there was a change of regime in Tobago and the Tobago people are suffering at the hands of a hapless, hopeless bunch of miscreants.
Right.
Now, I am a man, English is one of the only subjects I did well with in school. And I like when people use words, I know they're trying to tell you something.
Right.
So the word "miscreant", it bothered me the first time I look at it because you're actually saying something when you call somebody a miscreant. A miscreant really is an evil person, dishonest, wicked, everything that you could talk about. So what the minister is saying there in the Parliament is that the THA officials from the Chief Secretary right now are a bunch of evil, wicked people. That is what she's saying. So, and it is, so, so I am not, I know this is how you feel about us.
Right. But is it fair, is it fair to take these comments personal or even internalize it? Because we know the mood of our politics. I mean, you hear the Prime Minister go and he calls his counterpart's names, you know, and that kind of thing. Is it that it should be taken as heavy as maybe you are internalizing it? Or is it that should it be accepted well? This is how we do things here and I'm going to take that on.
No, well, I don't see it that way. Because if I was to make a description of you, ma'am, it is because this is how I feel about you.
Okay.
You understand? That's how I take it. And maybe we are at the place now where we need to take, we need to be careful about what we say about people.
Right.
And I do not subscribe to this view that because you say it in Parliament, you didn't mean it. And I don't subscribe to that. You say what is on your heart.
Or people say Mount Oak, story jump on.
Of course. And not only that, not only her behavior is reflective of those sentiments.
Right. So let's look more, so we have this situation, the Blackrock. So is it that you mentioned that the relationship was cordial in the past?
Yes.
But you would have experienced a deterioration in your perspective? And here we have this situation where the ministry had planned courses. Is it that you all had no inclination that was happening in terms of Comdev?
Right, right. I did not receive any information. I mean, I don't, I don't go into the day-to-day running of those things. But what I'm saying is that the the vocational skills training program is a flagship program for the division that happens every year.
Yes.
Right? And we utilize all the facilities, including Blackrock. So it's not the first time.
Right.
This is why I had a difficulty reconciling how Mister Paul could say that he didn't know that, you know, that 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 and to say that the things were not clashing when I was informed and more than one of them, that there was in fact a clash. Why would you, based on the information that we put earlier, you've been written to since last year, July?
Right.
Why would you go and give the minister permission to hold vocational skills training classes in the Blackrock facility, knowing that the division having classes? You understand? And also doing the same classes that the division is doing in large part? And also engaging the very tutor, the diva, who does that? Who does that?
Right, right.
Now, the minister of 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 Community Development and Sport is responsible for the Black Dwight York Stadium.
Yes.
It falls under her purview. There is no way that the THA or anybody could just go go around there and 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 have any event that is not one in accordance with the philosophy of the usage of the of the thing.
Right.
And if, let us assume that somebody else or even the the ministry is having a project there, you don't expect that they will just say, listen, cancel our project to do yours. You understand? Because it falls under your purview and you have a remit, you have a responsibility. That is understood. It is the very same thing.
Right. And I know that um a memo you would have written internally in your division must remain public.
Yes.
And um everybody would have had their say. What was, what was the driving force behind that memo? And I want us to just wrap up in terms of, you know, sharing what is the way forward now.
Yes, yes. Um, now, because, of course, for some of these, and this is, the Blackrock situation is only one.
Right.
There have been others.
Right.
Right? And I just decide time for this thing to stop.
Right.
Because it keeps getting worse and she keep pushing the boundaries further and further. So it's time to be stopped. You cannot, you cannot just unilaterally come into the Tobago space and do operations trying to use the very facilities that fall under the purview of the various secretaries with impunity. And you don't even have the courtesy to have a conversation. That has to stop. And so the, that pretty much is representative of 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 what has transpired with that situation. Right? Additionally, on April ninth, I think it was, Mister, when the issue about the 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 class, you know, the classes arose.
Right.
Mister Paul was summoned to a very, to a meeting at the division by the administrator and to the officers. They reported that it was a very cordial meeting. They pointed out to Mister Paul that this is happening and so on, and you have to reverse this decision. Mister Paul agreed to find an alternative place for the classes.
Okay.
He even mentioned that he could probably approach the those in body, use the pantent or one of the churches and so on. He said that, I don't lie on him, you understand? But then to go back and do the same thing and not follow up on the very thing. So the point I am making is there is no, there is no material gain for me to try to demonize Mister Paul or engineer that. The facts are the fact, these are the things that as I could. I think, and a lot of galvanizing and and polarizing has taken place because of 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 some of the things that are put out in the public. And this thing about the about the THA bans central government. I mean, that is so far from the truth.
Right.
You know, I I I brought some images to reflect, to speak about the 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 relationship that's supposed to exist and can exist and is existing.
Right.
You understand?
So before we, because I want you to, we really have to wrap up soon and I want you to talk about that trip um that some of the Tobago House of Assembly um employees, secretaries, etc., were privy to on the invitation of Minister Cummings.
Yes, yes.
But I just want in terms of the way forward now, this has happened.
Yes.
And everybody keeps, you know, holding their own.
Right.
What is the next house? Is there a resolution to this? What can we expect?
Right. So the only, the only resolution to this really is as per the rules. If the Ministry of Community Development wants to have a program in any of the facilities that fall under the purview of this secretary, there is a process that that is supposed to be done, you you write, write to to the division. If in the division's interest, that particular activity does not contravene the rules, fine.
Right.
You understand? And that is it, that is the issue. All we are saying is that there is a right and wrong to this thing.
Mm-hmm.
Right? There is a right and wrong. And if you do the right thing, we will have the right outcome. I also also say that the village, especially the village of villages of Blackrock, because, you know, I know this is a very touchy issue, that I am in no fight with you. I want you to get the information nonetheless too, because you know, the Blackrock Village is not made up of just one group of people. There are people all over. I am certain that everybody in Blackrock does not know all these things that we're bringing out to the fore.
Right.
You understand? That there's been subventions that have been received. We have to find out how much it was. And when I find it out, I'm gonna put it out in the pub because it's not personal people money.
Right.
We are not at all inferring that anybody was engaging any activity that was nefarious. That's not what we say. But the information will be put out there for public consumption. So we can know this is what we should expect and all that kind of stuff.
So let's sit square. Your your UN trip, what was that trip about? How did you get in that space?
Yes, yes, yes.
What were maybe some of the discussions or, or, you know, lessons learned out of a trip like that?
The the UN trip is is um Minister Foster Cummings, the Minister of Youth and National Services. Um, we share a very, very, very cordial relationship. Um, he extended an invite to the division, to me as the secretary last year, the first time to this IcoSoc conference. It is, of course, a conference held at the UN where it is at a an engagement of young people across the world on every material issue you can think about that has to do with the building and the development of the societies and countries. It has to do with politics. It has to do with the social challenges. It has to do with global warming. It has to, every, every matter, every matter. And um and so it was really, at first, the first time it was an intimidating space. You understand? Because you're in this space with all these people and to listen to the conversations and to listen to the various young people share some of the things that that's happening in their various countries.
Right.
Listening to some of the success stories from some of the countries of in Africa and Europe and so on. I learnt for the first time. I did not even know there was a country by that name. I can't even pronounce it properly. Um, I sat next to this gentleman. It is a country that is somewhere close to Iran, uh somewhere in that general area. Um, I wouldn't even try to pronounce it. But the gentleman gave me this thing that I'm on, I'm wearing on my hand here.
Okay.
And he was one of the speakers and so on and and just sharing their own perspective on what young people are facing in those countries and so on.
Right.
Also, we had the opportunity to to have a courtesy call with the UN Secretary General, who is from Trinidad.
Yes, yes.
Um, that was a meaningful conversation. Of course, we were there last year when the time for the voting was coming up and so on and and those kinds of things. Um, we also were privileged to go to the consulate. And that was an interesting conversation. And we talked about possibilities and opportunities for people from um from Tobago, entrepreneurs and so on, who want to get their products into the international market.
Right.
And so on. Those conversations were taking place. And um it has encouraged me to jump in as part of the voice for those things and see how we can do.
Okay.
Because remember, in our tech voc, in our, in our vocational skills training, we are graduating last year, we graduated fifteen hundred people.
Yes.
And so we are trying to find, find a way to 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 get these people at this, give them a start and 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 wherever we can get them.
They know how they are now equipped with the skill.
Indeed, indeed. And they may want to 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 some of, because we as, the products that I have seen are products that are of international standard.
Yes.
So there is support with that um with that link up. And that is something that we will pursue. Um, also, we had a opportunity to have a conversation with um one of the ministers of the government of Barbados of 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 the Bahamas. Um, this minister for Assistant Secretary Clark, because there was Carifta Games last year in the Bahamas and had an interaction with the minister about the possible support with coaching, training and that kind of thing. So that is one of the things that I would like to pursue coming out of that conversation. Generally, generally, it was a, it was a very healthy engagement. Um, Miss Diganzo, who is the, our sports director, our youth director, I'm sorry, was there and um she had the opportunity to be a part of a few sessions and so on, that deal directly with some of those things. So I think that that was a useful engagement, you know? And all to assist us in providing the services to to our people to the best way that we can. And every, every opportunity that presents itself and as long as it is convenient for us so to do, we are going to take those opportunities. Because we really want to see how we can develop this space that we call Tobago.
Yes, most definitely. And and that's important.
Sure.
You know, so I want to thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you.
Um, Secretary Beans. And of course, you know, we in Tobago, I always remind us, we all have to live here at the end of the day, whatever happens around us.
Indeed.
You know, let us remember to live peaceably with each other.
Indeed.
Um, and you know, let's just want the best for each other because we are here in this place together. So thank you so much, viewers. We get ready for a break. And when we return, we have two guests who will be joining us um virtually to speak about a symposium. So make sure and stay right here on GMT.